I'm Debbie Fleishman. I'm a nurse practitioner at Alliance Express Urgent Care in Covington. We are currently available to test anybody with symptoms of fever, fatigue, cough, shortness of breath, sore throat, or any symptoms that are concerning for COVID-19, flu, or strep. Currently, we just started what the VHSL deems Season 2. That is what we commonly knew as fall sports. So for Covington High School, that is football, cross-country, golf, volleyball. The only sport that has started thus far is football. The remainder of the sports would not start until February 15th, which is next Monday. Football started with their first practice on February 4th. We have all practices occurring in Phase 2 guidelines per our metrics. I can provide you with that document, but it's essentially not sharing any sort of equipment, including a football or basketball. It is staying six feet apart. The football helmets do have the face guards on them, which are very nice, and I appreciate the fact that our school division purchased those. So we have had practices for football on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and then today. We have, I believe, 20 kids out, which will be varsity only. We don't have enough to have a JV level at this point. So I'll be glad to answer any questions you have. I weekly check, actually daily check, the metrics, and we make decisions based on the numbers that we see on the website for the BDH.
Miss Hale, did you know that recently the governor had a press conference, and one of the items that he discussed was increasing the preparedness for returning to school by March 15? I don't know, the president's administration at some point mentioned the same thing, getting the kids back in schools. With that being said, and how things are trending, based on where we're at right now, where do you think we're going to be by the end of the month?
Well, the last week of basketball season, which would have been the week starting January 25th, our metrics were 2,200, which is extremely high. And Mr. Smith was right when he stated that we have declined fairly quickly in a two-week timeframe, three weeks. So if we can continue on the trend that we're on, 200 is reachable. But we've got to get to 200 before February 22nd, or games will continue to be canceled So some areas, some localities are under 200. So they are adding their sports back based on that data. We are at 659.3 as of today.
If I remember correctly, there were 16 games scheduled for volleyball?
We are now down to five due to one team not having enough participants just as of this week, but we have five now that Craig County had to drop out.
Does that season encompass the other sports, or they all occur within that five to six weeks?
They do. Football's a little, maybe a week and a half longer for the sake of the 15-day minimum practice requirement that they have to reach before they can play a game. Volleyball, I believe, and everything else is eight practices. So their competition would start February, or March 1, and football's first one would be February 22. The VHSL gave you seven weeks to get in six games.
I didn't type those.
It's six weeks for everything, and I think seven for football because of the scheduling, you know, trying to accommodate schedules.
Does the athletic department have everything it requires, whether that be PPE or even things that we couldn't just invent a thin air, like extra people to help do things? But is there anything that we lack? If we were to return to competition tomorrow, what would give you the most anxiety, and what would you need?
The unknowns would give me the anxiety.
I guess, we talked a little bit, can you refresh us? I know when you presented the Athletic Land, we voted back two months ago or so. You talked about there were potential pathways even inside of the metrics. Again, I remember it as, you know, some decreasing numbers, things like that, so where we would technically be in the red, but we would still have a pathway to allow students to play. Can you refresh me specifically about what that would be, and how we'd come about that?
Per our metrics, if we're in the red, we don't have contests, we have practices. If we get into the orange, which we're at 659.3, that would require us getting to 200. We can have games, and then our metrics say, you know, the different guidelines based on fans. Now, all the changes that happen with the governor's office, and the VHSL, and the VDOE, that is almost a daily fluctuation, quite honestly. So at that time, when I spoke to you, it was no fans, and that has changed somewhat based on the governor's orders. But we would have to, per our metrics, get down to 200 to have contests.
Our numbers have come down tremendously. We've reopened schools on January 19, and made decisions to reopen. Our metric was at 2,200 per 100,000, which was probably one of the highest in the state. And we were able to safely mitigate and get our children back into school. They're down, as Ms. Hale said, to 659 today. They've fluctuated up and down. We've seen them come down in the past two weeks. But they're still not where I'd like them to be to consider playing. We have purchased everything that the athletic department has needed for any sports, including those face shields for the football team. We purchased gloves for, I think, the football team and maybe volleyball team, I can't remember. But we have done a lot of purchasing of every PPE thing that's been requested. We also purchased the on-the-spectator, Ms. Hale, I can't think of the name of it, so that the spectators can watch from home when you can't have all your family come to the game. So that's ready to go. Ms. Hale, would you speak to that?
I can't. They call it the Pixelight Camera System installed in the gym and also at Casey Field. The gym has been calibrated, and Casey Field will be calibrated when it stops snowing, hopefully soon. And the picture is pretty amazing. We ran some trial runs with practices to, you know, to see, I'm sure you've watched, some of you have watched this, this would stream on the NFHS Network, live stream, $10 monthly subscription, or $69.99 annual subscription. So the systems are ready, for the most part, without calibrating the lines for the football field because of the restrictions. If we get out of the red, we would be ready to go with that system.
Ms. Hale also provided a document about what was happening in the Pioneer District and the Mountain Empire District that we play in. She provided you an update tonight because she got some new information about what the localities around us are doing. Ms. Hale, would you like to explain a little bit about that? If you don't mind?
I just basically compiled data from Region C schools, which is made up of the Pioneer District and the Mountain Empire District. And a lot of times, you'll hear confusion about region when we talk about COVID. And region for athletics is different than region for health districts. So I've got on your document, region for the VHSL standpoint by Region 1C, and then also the Health District, Renoke and Allegheny Health District. And it just basically lists the school, whether they're following the metrics, which phase are they using if they practice or participate, and their plans for winter and fall sports. Couple pieces are missing because I have not heard back from those localities yet. But for the most part, it's pretty complete. And some holes there are that they have not made their final decision yet.
Have you been able to talk with any of your colleagues, specifically the ones that are not using metrics? Is this central office decision that you're making, weekly, bi-weekly, something, how we're feeling about this?
Their school board voted to not follow the metrics and to play regardless.
But from an administrative, from athletic department on up through the central office, presumably they can still push upon games if there is some sort of contact trace outbreak?
There have been, it's just not publicized. There are numerous issues that occur that aren't in the media for quarantines and cancellations.
We have a recent phone call with Dr. Loro, who now is a resident in the Health Department of our area, the Allegheny Health Department. Dr. Odell had been the director, and she was fired, and Dr. Loro had stepped in, and she had made statements and it was publicized about sports and her concern about sports. And we listen to those weekly, and questions are asked about sports. And then another document that I sent you all today is something we do in the school division weekly. Every Thursday or Friday, depending on the weather, the school division administrators and myself and Nurse Sally Wolf, we go over the division metrics and look at the trends in the school and the community. We feel like the Allegheny Highlands metrics, we're all one community, and we look at Allegheny, and we look at Covington's trends, and we look at the number of cases that are in our school division. I'm very, very pleased about the discussions that we have and how seriously we take the data, and it's been a very, very eye-opening. I'd like to take this time to thank our principals, and our custodians, and our staff, and our school nurses for all the mitigation strategies that they continue to do so that we can keep the numbers down inside our school division. We have been very fortunate that we have been able to safely mitigate concerns and keep the numbers down. I was so glad to hear Coach Smith say that the football team and players and coaches have been following the required masks and six feet social distancing that we require in the school division. That was very good to hear. But this is something that we do take seriously and review weekly, if not daily. I look at the metrics every day, Ms. Hale looks at the metrics every day, so does our nursing staff. But we use this data that comes from the Health Department about our locality COVID numbers to make some decisions about athletics and about what else should we do in the school division to keep everyone safe. We have had no outbreaks that we can call that are connected to our school division. We do know the community spread is the cause of what we see inside the quarantine situations in our school division. That we can't control. We can control what we have in our classrooms, which we have done a wonderful job of doing. But these are just some things we use to make our weekly decisions about athletics. And I know it was somewhat sad who's making the decisions. Well, no one's really making the decisions. The data is helping us make the decision about what we should do to keep our athletes safe. And I believe we were also asked the question about instruction, and I still believe that instruction is important in our school division, and we have to protect both ends, the instructional piece, the extracurricular piece, and the mental health piece of all of our school students. So we've worked very hard to think about all the different avenues, and hopefully, I believe up to this point, we have made the right decisions, and we will continue to work hard to make the right decisions for all. So Ms. Hale, was there anything else you thought we should discuss this evening?
No, not unless you have any more questions, concerns, or comments for me or my staff.
My biggest concern, we touched on it briefly when Mr. Smith was here speaking, and I know I've had conversations with Melinda about this. Given the fact that the independent, the AAUs, and the travel ball associations were still cranked up back during basketball season, football typically in our area hasn't had the robust, you know, travel type participation, but if, I just wonder how much good are we going to be doing as a school division if we're saying we're going to limit or restrict in, you know, school-sponsored athletic activities? But we know that at least a certain contingent of our student athletes are going to be out and about, you know, basically doing the same thing that we're not allowing them to do. So I guess from an overall standpoint, I wonder what good it is that we're doing. If we're using rigid metrics, and we're saying it's got to get to 200, which of course is what we had talked about, but our student athletes, especially those that are very dedicated and very, you know, sports-minded, if those athletes and their families are still going to these events, then aren't we necessarily still exposing, you know, everyone else in our division to the same thing that we're trying to protect them from? So I think if it's not necessarily a question or anything, any more of a comment? I have thought very deeply when this began, and where does our responsibility as a school division, your responsibility as an athletic director, our responsibility as a school board, where does that begin and end with relation to individual families and how they conduct and protect their most vulnerable? Ultimately, I would like for athletes to return to the field or the court, and I would like to have families who have their student athletes participating, I would like for them to understand that they may have to make some sacrifices. If there are some older members of that family, maybe there has to be some limitations as to, you know, how much interaction there is with that athlete and the family while they're participating, because we do know they will be coming into contact with other folks. I just worry that we're in quicksand here as far as our actual mitigation results. I'm not talking about our efforts, but what it actually means for the spread of COVID within our community if we know these athletes, at least a certain percentage of them, are still going out competing in private venues, if you will. So do you think that that will be an issue for us just as a division, just knowing the athletes a little bit better than maybe the rest of it?
I think travel-level athletes are going to play travel regardless. I think, based on my experience, I'm getting a lot of feedback here, and based on conversations that I have with other school divisions, and actually from the VHSL level, a lot of work goes into keeping Virginia High School-sponsored athletics and travel separate because they are two separate entities, they are two very different organizations and a totally separate list of guidelines that each must follow and categories that they fall under. So yes, I think athletes will play travel. Some will play travel and high school, some will play travel if they can't play high school, and then we'll have some that won't play at all. So can I give you a percentage? Probably not, but I think you will have a mixture of kids branching out to play travel if high school doesn't happen, and I think you'll have some that'll play that if high school sports resign.
And I think one of the issues that we've all been dealing with, but I think it comes home specifically on this issue, just like I said, I mean, we do as a school division want to do everything we can to limit the spread insofar as it's a school-sponsored event or something like that. I just worry that despite our best efforts, we're still going to have those people, those athletes, those families going out, they're going to find a way to compete in these sports. And that will undercut, to at least a certain degree, some of the rationale behind why it is we're doing what we're doing, whether that's using these metrics and relying on the data. Yeah, I've had comments from people out in the community that I think with different sports, you can start to explain it a little better, but one of the comments I'm hearing is, well, if the kids can go back into the classroom, how come we can't find a way for them to compete? And I know with different sports and different levels of contact, there's some discussion there to be had, but from an overarching standpoint, if we're talking about student well-being, just their overall mental health, and thankfully, those sorts of things are starting to be talked about again as it relates to getting kids back in the classroom, but I think it's important also with kids competing in athletics as well. There is a psychological and emotional impact, especially when, as we've seen, other members of our community and other school divisions comment about how people around, the divisions around us are playing. And I think there's something to be said for us just making every effort that we can to get kids back into the classroom and the athletic field.
I agree with you, and I understand where you're coming from. We are following the metrics that we have voted on to follow. So we are following the matrix and the metrics that this board approved, and we will continue to do so to keep everyone safe as we've been directed to do.
Like I mentioned when Mr. Smith was in here, regardless of how we feel individually, we voted as a board, and I share the same thoughts as Jonathan and others too, you know, I want to see them on the field, I want to see them on the court. And I do think the mental health aspect of it is huge. So it's my hope that within this next two and a half weeks or so, or two weeks, we are getting to that number, because I'm sure if we're not, we will be asked to revisit it, I'm sure. There will be a push, there will be individuals that don't agree, and they'll want to come, and they'll want to poll us, and they'll want to discuss it. So hopefully, though, we get there and we continue the trend downward that way, we're all back in school, we're all back on the field, and we're all able to watch from whatever media is available to do that. Anything else, Christine Johnson?
And if any other board member would be ready to speak, I'll be quiet. I just want to, I'd like to just make this objection that perhaps we heard this presentation tonight, and if we do have a board meeting, we'd like to do it next week because we visit this topic again and see where our metrics are. Ms. Hale, explain what needs to happen should the football team or any other sport be allowed to engage in a game? What must they prepare to do to be ready to actually show up on the field, be safe and ready to compete, whether it's volleyball, whether it's football, any of those competitive sports?
We would need to, our metrics say that when we're in the red, we practice under more restrictive guidelines, and playing a football game is not a restrictive activity, obviously. So we would have to get the go-ahead to participate, essentially full go, with the mitigation strategies in place, which, you know, the risk then greatly increases because right now, we are being very restrictive in our practice sessions. We are not hitting in football.
With that, just briefly, Ms. Hale, calling on your athletic training background, and then thinking back to my days as a player, what sort of physical issues can we expect? Because conditioning one's body for the rigors of a full football game, four quarters of being hit and hitting, what sort of a toll on our student athletes do we think that might take if they're not allowed the full contact that they would otherwise be having?
I think practicing in Phase 2 guidelines for a sport that is considered collision sets them up for maybe not knowing how to properly tackle or injuries from not being prepared for what their body would go through physically. But it is collision, so we have to make sure that we know that, we know that close contact is a problem for COVID, and we're talking about collision. So we just need to make sure that we know, every sport is not the same. So one, you know, one policy fits all doesn't really apply with COVID, sadly.
You were mentioning the upcoming season golf, golf is a lot of that.
Yes, correct.
Not knowing exactly how the VHSL has laid that out as to how golf competitions could be held, but also understanding golf can be very much a solo sport, is anything we've just talked about, metrics or any of that, is golf impacted by that?
If we have a one policy fits all, yes.
That's a big one. I can be, I think that's what you were mentioning, I think there's room to agree to disagree on some sports because of their level of contact, but I really don't want to see us in a position to where we're telling a golfer that carries his or her bag, that is the only one that touches their golf ball, the only one that touches their clubs, really don't want to tell that student athlete they cannot play golf because of metrics. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Ms. Hale?
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a question for you.
Sure.
Pretty much you are very familiar with the metrics. You have presented us with a lot of information surrounding other schools and everything. Is there anything else that you would like to share with us to take into consideration? Because you're right, I guess one size doesn't fit all sports, but is there anything, because this is your, I guess, your thing, you know more about, is there anything else that you would like to share with us to help us make a decision? And I think we have to keep in mind that just because we make a decision on one sport, it may be a little different on another sport, but is there anything else that you can share with us?
I can. The NFHS just came out with revised guidance on COVID-19 transmission during high school sports. It's actually this week it came out. Their previous statement was kind of a one policy fits all in their previous statement based on is the sport low risk, moderate risk, high risk? Their newest guidelines have essentially taken that approach and changed it to five factors that they say school division should consider when deciding, making these types of decisions. And the prevailing factor, they say, or the most critical factor, is community infection rate. So that is the factor that they say should be at the top of the list, and our infection rate... And our infection rate has been high, but the positive is that it is trending downward. They say that the, the next factor would be participants in non-contact sports are going to show lower rates of COVID-19 than contact sports, which, you know, that's pretty much the case. The third factor, participants in outdoor sports show lower rates of COVID than in indoor sports. Number four, face mask use while participating in indoor sports results in COVID-19 rates comparable to the rates found in outdoor sports. And then the fifth factor, the great majority of sports-related spread of COVID does not appear to occur during the sports participation itself, but from the social contact. So locker rooms, sidelines, traveling on a, on a bus, dining, or interacting in the community. So those are the five factors that they have released for school divisions to consider when making decisions on athletics. And that is a newer approach than what they had come out with in the summer.
Okay. I really appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
It definitely gives us something to look at.
And I can get you this document if you'd like.
Okay. And like you said, the numbers are trending downward. We are going to have budget meetings. So this is definitely something we could revisit. Would you agree forward at those meetings?
Yes.
Okay. And if you find anything else that will update us concerning how we can, you know, adjust, let us know, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
And Ms. Hale, before you leave, did you make a copy of that, drop it to all the board members?
Sure, sure.
I feel like I read it somewhere. Did you send me that?
I sent her an email, but I'm not sure if I read it.
Okay. I'm reading, I'm just looking for it.
I'd like to go in your office and tell you who's in charge. It's just something I think came out last year prior to.
And I just want to say this, Ms. Hale, I do appreciate everything you all are doing. I hope our students understand as well as our parents that we definitely want to see them back out there. Because I, I like Jonathan Amber and I'm sure the rest of the board, we understand the mental health that's involved with this, especially being an athlete and something you truly enjoy doing. But we do have safety and health guidelines. And I'm hoping, it sounds like they are investigating things and there's more things that's coming to fruition that we can consider and we can possibly get our athletes back out into the sports that they desire to play. Okay, we're, I know, we're definitely going to be looking towards that, okay?
I, I would just like to maybe conclude by saying that this is not an easy position for anybody to be in. The board, you guys have very difficult decisions to make. Mrs. Snead Johnson has difficult decisions to make. I don't like being in this position because I am the biggest sports-minded person that there is. Sports is who I am. I think you guys know that. I know the value of what these sports do for our student athletes in the classroom and on the court or the field because it does carry over and it does, you know, it's, it's interwoven. And I just want our students to know, I want our student athletes to know, I want our parents to know, and I want the community to know that we want them back out there. We all do. I don't think there's anybody that would say that they don't. And we know the value of it. It just puts it in a tough position when safety has to come first. And thank goodness the numbers are trending downward. There, there is light at the end of the tunnel, I feel like. And I appreciate you listening to us, to our parents, to our coaches, and hopefully things will continue to get better. And I will do all I can to ensure that the mitigation strategies are followed and that we can get out on the court and the field, hopefully seeing what it says.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.